Good morning and welcome to the Canmore Town Council Canada Interviews. Today I'm here with Tanya Forbear. Councillor Tanya Forbear is finishing her first term as an elected official on Canmore council. She's a second generation of three to be born and raised in Canmore. She spent fifteen years as a journalist, editor, and radio show host in Canmore, and has extensive background knowledge on every issue that we face as a community. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Alright, let's get started talking about responsible growth. How do you plan to balance Canmore's growth with preserving its small-town character and surrounding natural areas?
So, this is an interesting question, and I want to approach it in a couple different ways. One is just kind of recognizing, we're not actually a small town anymore, we're a small city. In my lifetime, I've seen Canmore's population double, twice, since I was born. And we are sit at the gateway of Banff National Park. We aren't like any other city or town, small town in Canada. We face unique challenges, and so growth is part of that. And so, we have delegated to us through the Municipal Government Act, the authority over land use and development. And so, we need to have these conversations as a community about what is the future growth of the different areas in our community. And we have to have them in a way that includes all the different levels of what it takes to grow. So that includes infrastructure. So if we don't have the capacity in our pipes for growth, then we can't grow. And so if we want to see density or infill or that type of solution in the future, we need to have those types of conversations. Now, the other is human use management. And that, you know, we're not technically responsible for the area around us, but we're stewards of the space that we occupy. And so managing our human use on the landscape, in the space that is Canmore, and having responsible human use really will take us into the future and help us balance those needs. Because I've seen presentations to council that have shown that if we keep people off leash dogs, out of the wildlife corridors, we'd have the same effect on increasing wildlife connectivity as if we didn't go to build out. Right? So I think that's really important. We have to be responsible for what we're responsible for, which is in our boundaries. And we have to have people at the table who understand strategically what the things are that we need to be doing to manage that. And I think that human use management, for me, in my platform, I've said visitor management strategy, because I think that we need to manage visitors first. But human use management isn't there.
Great. And tourism is very important to our economy here in Canmore. But what strategies will you support to manage tourism so it benefits our economy without overwhelming local infrastructure or housing availability?
That's actually that visitor management strategy. So, I look to our neighbors Banff, and I see they have Parks Canada. They have a whole federal level of government that is investing in managing human use on our landscape, visitor management. And we don't necessarily have that in Canmore. We don't have that level of sophistication in terms of our relationship with the province to be tackling that issue, but we can. And that's where having a strategy that is a legitimate area that council can give direction. And so by creating a strategy, that strategy contains sort of the direction, like what we want to do and where we want to go. I think regenerative tourism is super important. We need to attract the visitors who have the same values as us, who when they are here want to also be stewards of this place and respect and value the same things that we respect and value about this place. And so that means being intentional about how we deliver our marketing, how we deliver any messaging about who we are and what this place is, how we manage people when they are here, the rules we have about acceptable behavior. That visitor, that visitor management strategy is something that I don't think that we've intentionally created specifically, but it's something that I have a vision for. And it comes out of some of the work and the motions that we've done to work with Banff on the stewardship council. And so colleagues in Banff, working really hard in this area. And I think it's just a really, really important area for us as leaders in our community on council to be engaged in and learning about. And that's, I think, for me, the approach for tourism.
Great, thank you. Housing affordability is a very hot topic for Canmore. What solutions would you propose and support to increase the supply of affordable and workforce housing for our local residents?
Okay, so that's a good question. And I think that we have a solution that's already working really well. Vital Homes is an excellent program. I have seen Vital Homes from day one. I was at the very first ribbon cutting of the very first project that they unveiled back in 2006. In that era, when I first started as a journalist in town. Also personally, I've lived in every type of housing that Canmore has. I've lived in the trailer park, I've lived in subsidized housing, I've lived in a basement suite. I purchased an attainable housing unit that was only made possible by a project that the town of Canmore did to provide housing in the community. So I know, like, I know housing very personally and professionally, covering it as a journalist as well. So Vital Homes is a legitimate program. We need to keep that and keep developing it. There's great potential there in different ways. There's a couple other things that we can also do. And I think that some of them are already in the works. One is like subsidizing people who develop suites in their homes. There's another way we could approach it, which is a program where instead of subsidizing it, people get the money for the improvements to build the suite and then pay it off over time on their taxes. That currently exists for sustainable sustainability improvements to your home. It's called the SEEP program. The community, oh my god, the acronym is escaping me. But we are one of the adopters of that program, is the town of Canmore in Alberta, and it's really successful. So it's something that could be repeated on housing. And then, we don't have any, we don't really allow, we allow suites in R2, but with parking. We could, we could change that and open up some more areas of our town for suite development as well. So those are some little things and tweaks. And I know what, like, I don't have the silver bullet on housing. I don't have the silver. But I know that above all else, we need to be building housing for our workforce, for our economy, for our community, for our people. And we have land to do that, and that work will, it started. So, and I've been a part of in my first term, and I would continue.
Great, thank you. Let's talk a little bit about public infrastructure. Much of Canmore's infrastructure, especially underground infrastructure beneath Main Street and some of our water systems and roads are aging and need a major repair. How would you prioritize investments in the roads, the trails, water systems, and perhaps public transportation?
So this is really important, and this is the area of asset management policy. And there are courses out there for elected officials to take, offered by the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, Alberta Municipalities. I've done my elected official education certificate. So asset management policy is really important. And you can use data to prioritize the work that you do, right? Like, so the things that are needed the most are done the most. It's not determined by bias or favoritism or whim, as I think is the best way to put it. And repair and maintenance. You have to prioritize repair and maintenance. If you are not keeping your things up to date, they will not last as long as you think they are. Now, the investments that we need to make in some of these things, I'm going to pick out public transportation. We need a facility to store and repair our buses. Rome Transit is a gem, and it's growing. And its growth is a challenge now. And so we have to catch up with that growth. We have to find a space for a facility for the fleet of buses that we need for our future as a community. So that's going to be really important work. Downtown, Main Street, with the area redevelopment plan and the future visioning of that. One of the things I think that's going to be really important there is working with businesses to have agreements in place around disruptions. Right? So that's going to be really important work to do. So those are the kinds of things that I think I'm bringing to the table in terms of a leadership role to say, these are the priorities that we need to work out before we actually go into the ground to do anything.
Great. As we all know, downtown is probably going to be seeing some major changes over the next ten years. What is your vision for the future of Canmore's downtown and other commercial districts?
Downtown is really important to me. I have lifelong memories of downtown. And I think it is really a treasure. It is... When I look at the number of small businesses we have in our community that are locally owned, like, we are not, we are not like other tourist destinations. We are, have and always been a community first, and the small businesses are the anchor point of that. And so we have to make sure that we're supporting our small businesses as we move forward with anything that happens in the downtown, and that those conversations are happening first, before we do the work. In terms of a permanent pedestrian zone, I put forward a motion to take that out. I don't, that's not my vision for the future. I think that the future is a walkable commercial district downtown. And perhaps at some point, there is a block that might year-round be closed. But I don't think year-round pedestrianization is commercially viable or fully thought through as an idea. What I want to prioritize is accessibility. And I don't mean just people getting there. I mean people, People Movement. Rick Hansen Society, I believe, has this toolkit for municipalities to work through to increase their accessibility in terms of people with mobility issues. Because it's not, it's not a thing that's just in certain age groups. We, human beings, and accessibility and making our spaces open to everyone should be the priority, not pedestrianizing Main Street, right? Like, to me, that should be the focus, and that's what, that's what I've tried to do in my work on the plan. And so that's what I would continue to do.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So far, Canmore has been very lucky in terms of wildfires. What climate adaptation or mitigation strategies would you champion to make Canmore more resilient to wildfires, floods, or other climate-related risks?
So, so many ideas. And I am a member of the Alberta Climate Leaders Caucus, and I was on the Alberta Municipalities' Environment and Sustainability Committee for two years. And so, and I do have some journalism awards around climate and sustainability writing. And so, climate resilience is important. So there's a couple things, we do a lot, so much good is happening. Let's just recognize that. Like, we are, we are leaders, we are not the ones that have faced what Jasper's faced. But we take every opportunity to learn and adapt and adjust and pivot. And then like, when things happen that increase the awareness around these issues, more money becomes available, and we are applying for it, and we are getting it, and we are doing work. So that's already happening. So what, for me, there's a couple other things. One is learnings out of Jasper, and just how we communicate and interact. Is there a space that we can create to communicate with our residents in an emergency? Right? We have Voian Alert, and we have all these things that we get people to do to register online. But do we have, are we able to communicate directly with our residents? Should they be evacuated? Like, what are, what are we doing for that? So, kind of looking at those areas that Jasper kind of opened up in terms of what we didn't know that we would need to do, right? Like, one of those things is just debris, debris removal. How do you handle that? It's, there's a lot of it in the aftermath of a wildfire. So like, resilience means also planning for what happens if it does happen, right? Because I believe we will be affected by wildfires somehow. Then, I'm just going to like, take, go all the way on the other side of climate and talk about circular economy. And I believe one of the things we don't recognize around climate change is its effects on affordability. And circular economy, to me, is a way we can address climate and affordability in many, in our community, so it's a multi-crisis solution. Now, I put forward a reuse at center for Canmore as one of my ideas. Now, that's a big hairy audacious kind of idea, and I don't know if it's even possible. But if you don't have a vision and you don't put it forward and you're going in, I believe if you're going for a role like this, that's what you got to do. But I'll give an example, and people can look it up. It's the Forty-Eater Tandler in Vienna. And this is, it's run to reduce things that are still useful from going in the landfill. And so right now, we have our large item pickup program. That goes straight to the landfill. So there are tons of things that are reusable and valuable and can be fixed or still, like, aren't even broken, that are going into landfill space. That's a climate problem for me, and that's an affordability problem. Like, there are solutions there. And there are people already doing work in the space, the Canmore Library, the Homelessness Society, the Biosphere. So like, how do we support them, right? It's not, the municipality doesn't have to solve all the problems. How do we support our community doing this work? Because when I say circular economy, I mean an economy, and I mean a culture. We have to treat garbage differently here, and we already recognize that by our bare bins. So why not, I think we should keep evolving that. And that, to me, is a climate resilience thing. I know it's not wildfire, I know it's not flood, but you did say other-related climate risks.
I welcome your ideas, for sure. Back again. Let's talk a little bit about arts and culture. How do you see the town supporting arts, culture, and recreational opportunities that will strengthen our community even further?
This is a really good question, because there's a space in which we can support the amazing groups that do amazing work in our community, and that's through grants. And this year, we launched microgrants for organizations. And I think like, smaller groups and arts and culture groups should really pay attention to that opportunity, because it's for little things that you need. And then, we're also looking at our overall Town of Canmore grant program. And I think that we increased the budget by, I think, about $10,000. But I think we can also leverage the money that other municipalities as well are investing in this area of work, leverage the Canmore Banff Foundation as an organization who's already helping deliver grant funds in the valley. And we can get a big, like, we can get a better return on our investment. And I don't think I know exactly the ways to change it. But I think that if we look at it, and we've started that process, we look at it and we collaborate, we can increase how much grant funds we're putting into our organizations. Then, recreation opportunities, those are really important. I think we, the recreation, we have a recreation master plan. And that's always where everything comes from, in terms of how things get prioritized and considered. And I think that's the space to have those community conversations. But, and those things come up routinely. I would like to, to take the time as the new council and actually put some, invest in our public engagement policy and see if we can do some work there, find some maybe innovative ways to connect and hear from our community. Because like, arts, culture, and recreation opportunities are ways, are areas where I think that one of the things that we need as council to make decisions is to hear from the community. So that's where that public participation policy that we have has a really important role. So how do we get feedback? Are there ways to increase budgets perhaps? Like, right? Because like, resources are a thing, we can't do more with less. So if we want more public participation and we want to hear from people to make decisions around and move forward with some of these master plan rewrites, I think we can, we can invest a little bit more in public, public engagement.
Great, great. They say it takes a village, and I know you just touched a little bit on this. But how will you involve residents in major decisions and make council more transparent and accountable to the community?
So doing that work with the public participation policy. I mean, it's based on this international guideline, which is like a spectrum of inform, consult, engage. Like, it gets really technical, but there are different levels that we communicate. So, I want to recognize that. There's the municipality, the government proper, there's council, the mayor, and the six councilors, and then there's me as an individual. I think those are the ways that, different channels and different ways of communicating. So for me personally, and I'm sorry for hitting the microphone while I talk, I want to up my game in terms of my own website. I've activated my newsletter, I'm calling it Curiosity Canmore, because a couple, for a couple of reasons. I don't know if longtime locals will remember Curiosity Corner was a thing in Canmore back in the day. But one of my great characteristics and things that I bring to the table is curiosity. And so I'm curious about things, so I'm curious about what people or think about things. I'm curious about people's input. And then I also want people to be curious about how things work. And I want to be able to help them understand how, like, what we're doing and how things work. And while the, we have policies that state, I'm not the official spokesperson for council if I'm just a councillor, right? But I can still share a lot of what we're doing. And I can make myself available more often. And so that, to me, is a space that I can, I can level up in. And then I can work with the rest of the council that's, if I'm elected, and whoever's elected, to make public engagement a priority. And then we do that work, right? And then, and then we see if it works, and we see if we hear that people feel they're being heard more. We do have our citizen satisfaction survey. And then there was, I believe, a citizen panel in the budget somewhere at some point. So there's some different ways in there that we can pursue, I think. But I know one space that I have total authority over, and that's me, so.
Great, great. Having been on council before, what are you most proud of?
Oh, that's a tough question. Do I have a time limit for this? No, I'm joking, I'm joking. For me, it's been my personal and professional development. I don't quit. And I'm, I, I take failure as a challenge to grow. And I have learned so much. And I already came to the table with a knowledge base that really can't be replicated, right? Like, it's not often that you would get someone running for council with my background, right? Like, fifteen years as a local journalist, being born and raised here, multi-generations, like, that, that background, but that isn't everything. And so I pursued things like the municipal elected leaders education certificate. I have also served on the Alberta Municipalities' Governance Committee, which I really enjoy. Governance is my special interest area, but it's not, it's not like flashy or everyone's interest. So that's where I do schooling and I do my own self-directed research into practices around decision-making, right? Because that's what we're doing. We are working as a group to make decisions together. And so if you're not, like, you have to make sure you're at the table contributing to making good decisions. Because if you're not contributing to making good decisions, then, then what are you doing, right? So that's my own responsibility, and so I've taken that really seriously. And I've accomplished a lot of things. I'm really excited about things like, I'll use an example that was a really good compromise, collaboration, and procedural geeky situation, where we have been debating the use of fireworks in our community for a while, right? There is Canada Day and New Year's, and then oftentimes, people have fireworks. You used to be able to get permits for events and do your own fireworks if you had a wedding. And over time, we pared that back. Covid hit, we didn't really do fireworks at Canada Day anymore. The wildfire threat through Covid plus that kind of like, so Canada Day fireworks have kind of like disappeared. But New Year's Eve fireworks was really important for me. I think that New Year's needs a celebration as a community that has light and splendor and magnificence to it. It's a dark time of year, and so for me, fireworks. But I hear my colleagues bring to the table concerns around the noise, wildlife, dogs. And so what's a, what is a, what is a compromise? What is a solution? And so I put forward doing a light installation as a way to replace fireworks, right? And so it got, it was getting debated at the Finance Committee, and the motion got amended. And then, but so it was no longer what I intended it to be, and that, it gets intense. It gets, it can get intense, and you can like, and so you have to always apologize when you, when you overreact. So I, that was a situation where I was like, not, I was like, reacted to it being changed, and I had to apologize. And then, but staying calm, listening to the continued debate, I didn't think that the motion actually reflected what my colleagues wanted. So I made a motion to reconsider, which is super technical in the procedural bylaw. And you need a certain, no, I didn't put forward a motion to reconsider because I couldn't do it. But I suggested someone else put forward a motion to reconsider. They put it forward, and then that passed. And then my original motion was back on the table, and I thought it was going to fail with four against it and three for it. But it passed with four for it and three against it. So we will have a light installation this year for New Year's. And like, so like, the motion to reconsider part, the, like, that, I felt like I was a quarterback on a football field, right? Like, with a vision, you know, trying to take things forward, but also trying to work with other people to, you know, it wasn't just about, like, ultimately, I would want fireworks, right? Like, I don't, I don't actually have a problem with them at New Year's Eve. But what does our community want?
Right.
Right? And if I listen to my community and I listen to my colleagues, yeah. So that, I don't know if that was too long of an answer, and I did get a little part mixed up. But that, you know, understanding the process, you know, seeing, seeing some solutions, having, having an idea of where I want to get to. Doing that work feels so special and magical. And so I know I'm doing the right thing and that this is what I'm supposed to be doing. And I'm just like, so blessed and lucky to still be able to live in my hometown.
Yes, yes. What, if anything, will you bring different to the table should you be re-elected?
So different from now or different from when I ran the first time?
Well, I've already heard that you are growing yourself. And maybe that's what will show up differently this time. But maybe you have something else that I haven't touched on that you really want us to know. This is your moment to tell us.
Okay. I think the most, the thing I didn't quite understand the first time is some of the fundamentals around collaboration and the openness to work with people that you don't agree with. And so, that's what I bring different to the table is, like, that's my, that is my journey commitment to be in this role, is that no matter what, no matter who is there, we have to be able to disagree with each other well. We have to create space for all the perspectives, because that- because that is how we will pull out all of the things that that we should be addressing along the way. And that to me, right, like, I think that that decision making is a process and 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 there's strategies. And you always have to, as you go along, be adjusting and reconsidering. And the oath and the MGA and everything that goes into being a counselor speaks about having an open mind and being objective. And so if like, if I can't just bring my, like, my bias has to be checked. I have to be bringing a different thing to the table than that. And that's openness. And so, and if we, the Navy SEALs have a saying, you gotta go slow to go fast. And I think that is exactly what we need at the council table because the Navy SEALs deal with daily complexity. That's exactly what Canmore deals with, daily complexity. So we as a council, we gotta go slow to go fast. And that's, and gotta be open to disagreeing and addressing things as we go. And that's to me what I bring to the table, and that's my difference maker. So thank you.
Great. I really appreciate you coming and sharing a little bit about your thoughts and where we might be going. Thank you very much for being here today.
Thank you.
And thank you all for watching. You can see the candidates, all the candidates interviews on our YouTube channel, canmorealberta.com. And you can learn more about the candidates at the upcoming forums. A full schedule of these town events are gonna be on the Town of Canmore website. And please do not forget to vote on October twentieth.